Okay, we're good.
Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for August fourth, twenty twenty. I want to remind Victoria residents that they can watch city council meetings live on suddenly channels fifteen or one fifteen on our city website at www.victoria tx.gov/vtv15 or on the city's Facebook page. If you wish to participate into a citizen communications segment of tonight's meeting, you can do so through a bit conferencing option. We have set up this option to limit social gatherings and protect our citizens and city employees from COVID nineteen. Here's how you access the video conference during citizens communications. The www.zoom.com from your web browser and select join a meeting located at the top of your browser and input four, 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 five, seven, three, one, one, three. Again, four, 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 five, seven, three, one, one, three for the meeting ID. Select join followed by open zoom, then join with convert audio. Click on the icon label participants to ask the option to raise hand at the bottom of the screen. Click raise hand, our moderator will announce you by your username you've selected and that will be your cue to begin speaking to counsel. Comments will be provided with audio only. There will not be an opportunity at this time to share your screen or any additional presentations. Please remember to silence any cell phones, televisions, or other backgrounds so that we can clearly hear your comments. During the citizens communication segment of tonight's meeting, the five minute comment period still applies as it did when citizens were here. Again, we ask comments be five minutes or less. The this information is also posted on our website again at victoria V I C T O R A T X dot gov forward slash TV fifteen. It is generally the practice of the city council not to respond to comments made during this time, but city staff will be available to follow up as necessary. At this time, I will ask our city secretary to call the role.
Good evening, Councilman Dela Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Solis. Councilman Bo Bot Knight.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Young.
He just doesn't respond.
Councilman Loughran.
I'm here.
And Mayor McCoy.
I'm here. Did we have enough from Ms. Solis?
Yes, sir. She's here.
And Dr. Young as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have all council members present. We do have a call and we will continue the meeting of the Victoria Council. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. For all. Boys, we want to this consider Tuesday night and we hope that you follow the meeting and participate as you wish. And now, Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements for tonight?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick announcement to make you aware and the public aware that we will be having a special city council meeting next Tuesday, August eleventh at five PM. This meeting will also take place via Zoom and the main topics of this council meeting need to officially propose the budget and officially start conversations about the trade. You may recall from the original budget calendar that we distributed that that conversation was supposed to occur today. But unfortunately, you know, due to some reasons outside of our control, we have to delay that a week. And so we will do that next week. In the meantime, I will more than likely be reaching out to you individually this week to notify you of some of the of what that conversation will be like next week. So that hopefully we can have a more robust and successful conversation next week. Other than that, though, Mayor, I don't have any other updates.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. I don't believe we have any public or employee recognitions tonight, so I'll move on to items from council. Are there any items not listed on the agenda for which the members of the council would like to request specific factual information, a revision of existing policy or placement of future agenda?
I just have one thing I wanted to say. Last party, I was coming down Plaza de Venavidas and right behind Walmart until you get to the subdivision, those lights on and it was pretty dark at night, so that area right there is not lighted. I just wanted somebody to check on it, please.
Certainly. We'll check on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other items from council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can you?
Yes, sir, I can, Doc. You got.
Okay, my microphone was off, like computer issues. Mr. Garza, you may be able to speak to this. I'd spoken with you or had some communications in regards to who is responsible if an accident happens with debris from accidents and some information. But is there any way that we can maybe explain that to the public and who's responsibility is so that that debris in a storm drains?
Sure, absolutely. So the the question or the issue at hand was when there's a car wreck, who's responsible for clearing the debris from the roadway? And obviously with the concern that if it's not cleared when it rains, that those elements might potentially go into our into our drainage system. And it's 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 an answer that's based off of the scenario. If the wreck is of the magnitude where a tow truck comes out, per the permits that the tow trucks get, they are required to pick up the debris. If they do not pick up the debris, they're actually subject for suspension or complete removal of their permit for this process. Obviously, for some of the minor accidents where tow trucks aren't called, depending on the roadway, meaning if it's a text dot roadway, text dot would be called to clear the debris if it's a city roadway. And if it's small enough, sometimes PD and fire departments do it themselves or if it necessitates calling Public Works, they would call Public Works.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Other, excuse me, any items from council?
I have one. It's not really an item from council, although I suppose it is. During this time when we're having Zoom meetings, when we have people that speak to us and was at our last meeting, where citizens speaking to us, I know that each of them knows their name very well, but it was very difficult to understand some of them. I don't know if we could ask people to please say their name slowly and clearly. And this, and I personally would like to know is to to know where they're from, if they're from the city, if they're from where they're from. But I think I think for ease of taking the minutes, we could at least ask them to please say their full name very clearly.
Okay, duly noted. Any other items? Hearing that, I'll move on to citizens communication. As a reminder, if you wish to participate in today's communication segment of the meeting, do so through the video conferencing option. Comments will be provided audio only. There will not an opportunity at this time to share your screen or any additional presentations. Remember to silence your cell phones, televisions, or other background noise so we can clearly hear your comments. And as Ms. Scott pointed out, if you could clearly say your name and where you're from, we would appreciate it very much. During this portion of the meeting, the five minute comment period still applies as it did when citizens were here in person. Following cities, citizens communication, I'm going to ask council to take up item E one, which is the appointments to members of the planning commission. And as such, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak at that time on that subject to do so at that time and and hold your comments until we can address them during deliberation of that subject. Are there any objections from council moving that forward? Then we'll do so. If not, Mr. Foot, do you have any citizens who wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, I have Dr. Hunt who wishes to speak, so I'm going to let him to speak.
Is he here to speak on the appointments?
Yes.
Ask him to wait until we get to that item?
Okay.
Are there any other citizens?
No, Mayor, I have another citizens wishing to speak.
Okay, then Ms. Gush, could you take us to item E one? Mr. Gush? Mr. Gush? I don't think Thomas is hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm having some audio trouble right quick. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, can you take us to item E one, please, sir?
Absolutely. Item E one is to appoint or reappoint members of the planning commission.
Mayor, this is your preference. This isn't noted on your script. And so April is going to go through the presentation and what we're envisioning is Ashley kind of summarizes the applicants, allowing them an opportunity to speak at that time.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
April and as we move forward.
Good evening. Tonight I have a brief presentation on the planning commission. The planning commission, if you'll move to next slide, James. The planning commission was organized to exercise control over the platting and subdivision of land both in city limits and then the three point five mile ET day by adoption of an interlocal agreement with Victoria County. The commission meets monthly to review the submitted plats and variance requests to city codes, chapter twenty and twenty one. The commission's duty is to approve the plat that meet class that meet the criteria detailed in the city code and may not approve or disapprove flats based on their own discretion. Variance approval is based on the criteria outlined in section twenty one dash sixteen of the city code. The board is composed of nine members that serve three year staggered terms. The commissioners may not serve more than two consecutive three year terms. And if a commissioner feels an unexpired term that has less than eighteen months remaining, they may serve two additional full terms. So our current members are Brian Riquita, James Johnson, Julia Welder, and those three commissioners, their terms expire at the end of this month. And then we have Gal Hod, Mary Ann Wyatt, Brittany Dearlum, Michael Atkinson, and we have two currently two vacancies due to resignations. Next slide, please. So we have those two vacancies for unexpired terms and those terms will expire in August of twenty twenty two. We have one appointment that will expire in August twenty twenty and the commissioner is not eligible for reappointment due to term limits. We have one appointment that will expire in August twenty twenty and the commissioner does not desire to be reappointed. And we have one appointment that will expire in August twenty twenty and the commission commissioner is eligible and does desire to be reappointed. It's a little confusing tonight, but we do have five places to fill. We have received applications from the following individuals interested in serving on the planning commission, Vic Caldwell, Raquel Garza, Brian Algean, Ashley Molton, Carl Light the third, Dr. Derek Hunt, Cynthia Staley, and then Brian Riquita is our commissioner that does desire to be reappointed. Do y'all have any questions on this portion of the presentation?
April, I would I would now give an opportunity for the applicants that are tuning in to say a few words. It might be prudent for you to take them one at a time and if they're on, they speak and if not, you know, they're not. We obviously know that Dr. Hunt is on, but I'm not sure if anybody else is.
Okay. Could Dr. Hunt be allowed to speak now, James?
Yes, Dr. Hunt, you're available to to speak now.
Greetings. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
All right, well, I'd like to say a good evening or good afternoon to Mr. Mayor to council members and the city manager, assistant managers, and all the city staff. I tried to take less than five minutes, but I just wanted to take the opportunity and 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 say that I'm very interested, of course, in appointing as one of the commissioners for dealing with planning. I have over twenty years experience with planning and development. I'm currently right now dealing with empowering and helping people to start business and deal with economic side in my my business. But I'm also invested in being a model citizen to the community of empowering our town that which we live. I'm invested with family, with everything, with my kids that are here in the school jigs. And I want Victoria to be a place that is not only known to us but known all over, a place that that has development that is is growing economically, that is citizen wise and a good place. I'm not really good at talking about myself, but I just wanted to take the time to to speak and say that I I plan to serve and and add to anything I can do to make Victoria greater or better than before. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt.
I believe Raquel Garza has her request to speak next, please.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, councilmen and women, as well as mayor and city managers. I'm Raquel Garza. I'm currently employed with our regional workforce developer. And I feel as the city of Victoria being largest community within the Golden Crescent region, as it continues to grow and develop, that we as citizens within the community must make certain that we be the guide for our smaller neighborhoods that we all support. Ten years experience within contract management within both the public and private sector. I've managed multimillion dollar contracts, employed in a private sector industry. And while doing so, I oversee many contracts that are land lease contracts. Currently, I sit as a member of the GCRP, the REDACT Committee, which is the Regional Economic Development Advisory Committee. I'm actively a member of BISD Education Nation. And if it as a member of the planning commission, I'd push for the planning commission to seek to ask in public interest and how to best further the concerns of the community as whole. We must ensure that the interest in development that we provide to the north side of the community is also reflected to the south side of the community. Also, we should seek broad and public involvement within the process and keep all activities accessible, inclusive at all times. As stewards, we must obtain a greater knowledge and awareness of zoning regulations and how they need to be applied effectively in a thorough manner throughout the city at all times. There should be greater comprehension and understanding of all projects and proposals from the other boards and councils within the city in order to guarantee development is happening as effectively as possible. I look forward to from you all. Any questions you may have, I would gladly answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
I believe Cynthia Staley is now asking to speak.
Can you? Hello? Yes, okay, great. Well, good afternoon and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to visit with you. I currently, oh, and I'm Cynthia Staley and the last name is spelled S T A L E Y. I currently serve at with as the president of Golden Crescent Habitat for Humanity. I've been there nineteen years. And as such, I understand the importance of the planning commission's role in subdivide in overseeing the subdivision of property within the city limits. We have, I understand, the platting process because as habitat we filed multiple plats for different projects. I understand the variance process from my side of it, not necessarily from the planning commission's side of it, because we have had to apply variances before. So we are builders of, most of you know what habitat is, but we are builders of homes for a low to moderate M. And we understand the importance of making sure that what we ask our builders to doesn't place an undue hardship and yet we need to make sure that they're maintaining a one a durable environment for Victoria move forward. So thank you for the opportunity to visit with you. If anyone has any questions, Raquel said I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you.
I believe Ashley Molton is next.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you all for letting me speak tonight. I am Ashley Molton for nonprofit here in Victoria, Texas, Billy Catan Recovery Outreach. I'm a licensed professional counselor there. I basically have no experience in planning, but I am a resident here, a mother of young children with best interest in in the planning that go on in the city. So my listening for applying and be a part of that, I feel it's important to be involved in make sure that I have the opportunity to, you know, have a voice in what is going on in the city where my children are growing up. Initially, I've been planning on doing being a bit owner in the future and and would like to just be involved as much as possible. So I think that is it. If y'all have any questions, I'll be available.
Thanks, Molton.
I do not believe there's anyone else requesting to speak at this time. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Bush, will you take us on to the next stage of the process?
Before before we do that, Mr. Mayor, I would just I just confirm if council have any questions for any of the individuals that that spoke. If not, then we can continue on.
Okay, I just have a few brief instructions on how we're going to do these appointments and planning. Since we're not in person, that's a little harder this time with so many appointments. Just remember, we do have five appointments to make tonight. Two of those appointments will be for unexpired terms that will end in August of twenty twenty two, so two of the three years still remaining. And those are due to those vacant positions because of resignations. And then we have appointments to make for full terms because either the commissioner doesn't want to be reappointed or cannot be due to term limits. And then we have one full term position that we can either reappoint the the commissioner that currently serves or we can select someone else. So up to you. So the first step we want to do is to sign that reappointment. So, Mayor, would you please ask about the reappointment of Brian Riquita?
I would entertain a motion from anybody in council. Does anyone wish to nominate Mr. Riquita to be reappointed?
I will nominate Mr. I'll make I'll move to nominate Mr. Riquita again to the planning commission.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Riquita. Is there any discussion? If not, offer a vote. All those in favor say aye. Oh, same side.
Okay, so that fills our first position. So we have four more to go. So the next thing that we'll take up are the two unexpired terms, which will end in August of twenty twenty two. So we will ask for nominations. And then after nominations are received, we will vote on each nominee separate if there are more than two nominees, because we do have two spots to fill. So if there are more than two nominees, we will vote on each nominee separately. And the candidate who is can't first two candidates to receive, the majority of the votes will be appointed to those two unexpired terms. And we do ask that everyone vote verbally so that we can hear and make the determination.
I would entertain those motions from council.
Entertain the nominees.
The names for two of the expired terms, two people.
I move, we appoint Cynthia Staley and Dr. Hunt for the unexpired terms.
I second it. There's a motion and a second to nominate those two. Is there a third nominee from anyone? Hearing that, I will call for any discussion. Hearing that, I'll call for a vote on those two appointments to the unexpired terms. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say aye. I hear no negatives. I assume it's a unanimous vote.
Okay, one last step. We need to fill those two full term positions that we have that will end in August of twenty twenty three. So we just need nominations for those two spots and we would vote on them separately if need be or we can vote together if they're nominated as last time. Or if we get more than two candidates, we'll vote separately and the two that get the most votes will will be appointed.
Entertain the motions for those two permanent appointments or the full term appointments.
Nominate Raquel Garza.
I'd nominate Vic Caldwell.
And I'd like to nominate Brian Holwin. Okay. Any other nominees? And I guess we will take a vote.
Yes, sir, if we could vote separately on those three individuals, please.
Before, just a point of clarification, Mayor, and this is probably for April and Thomas, but are you wanting them to make these votes as part of a motion? Or are you simply trying to get informal votes to narrow it down?
Informal votes to narrow them down.
That's that's correct, Mayor. The the vote that you're looking for right now is we will take each of the nominees one at a time in the order that they were nominated. And so the first question is, do we want to vote yes or no on Raquel Garza being on the resolution? And and then we'll move on to the next.
Right. So I'll ask all those wish to appoint Ms. Garza to, I guess, say so, identify yourself. Yes.
Hi, from Jeff.
Hi.
From Mark.
I think I saw three. Mayor, you may want to ask if there are any nays?
There any nays to Raquel Garza?
Well, nay from Jeff.
That's a strong term.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So as I understand it, that is a three one vote with a few abstentions. And so that's actually a passing vote. Her name go into the resolution.
Well, I don't think we necessarily knew how that would go.
That's a fair point, I think.
Pardon?
That's a fair.
Like two out of three, and then we'll.
I would almost ask if we could just write two names down and put it over camera.
I was thinking the same thing, or if we could go by each district and like Mr. Delagarsa go first and just get two names and let's tally them up and see where we are, just like we would do as paper ballots.
I, I agree that something could be different because I don't understand how three out of seven would would move that person on to the ballot.
Right, I, I understand the confusion and I, I certainly agree with you. I think when we were envisioning this process, we didn't anticipate that people might abstain from voting yes or no on including people in this on the nomination process. And we're all, we're all striving to do the best we can with this technological situation. But Mayor, I, I, I think it's up to you at this point. If you would prefer to use a different method, we could certainly do that.
I have those three. If people would just, like was suggested, put the two of those three up. If they could ease it up to their screen and miss, April could count them. Would that suffice?
We can do a roll call vote at this point as well. I could ask who was voting in favor of Ms. Garza. And then we could do that same with all three nominees and then see who has the most, that have the most.
To be the top two getters, it would go forward.
Yes, sir.
Point, right.
And I.
Do we only vote once?
Her first time, I would think. If she, are you going to go around for each person? Or each? Each council member? In other words, is it going to call me and ask for two names? Or are you going to start with the name on the list and call for all seven council members?
Mr. Bocknight had suggested that you guys each nominate two, if that, if that's what you're comfortable with, which was is the same thing you would do in paper in person.
Right.
Exactly. Just do a roll call and each of us will give you two names.
I want to thank everybody. I thank everybody who's applied. It's a different situation. A wonderful situation to have so many qualified applicants. And so we make appointments every year. So I want those people to know that.
Yes.
And I know. Many of the applications also have other areas of interest with this as well.
Yes. So we'll start with Councilman Delagarsa from District One. Which two names do you wish to nominate, sir?
Raquel Garza and Vic Caldwell.
Okay. Mayor Protim Salis.
Raquel Garza and Brian Ogden.
Okay, and Councilman Bocknight?
Raquel Garza and Brian Ogden.
Brian Ogden, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And next would be Councilwoman Scott?
Vic Caldwell and Brian Ogden.
Council, Councilman Young?
Vic Caldwell and Brian Ogden.
And Councilman Lofgren, please.
I think he's muted.
Mr. Lofgren?
Raquel Garza and Vic Caldwell.
And Mayor McCoy?
Brian Ogden and Caldwell.
Was the last one, Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So you'll be one moment to tally that. I believe Mr. Ogden received five votes and Mr. Caldwell received five votes and Ms. Garza received four. So the, the top two would be Vic Caldwell and Brian Ogden.
I move that we appoint Brian Ogden and Vic Caldwell to the Planning Commission. For the unexpired term or maybe expired terms?
Full terms.
Full terms.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Vic Caldwell and Brian Ogden to the full terms of the Planning Commission. Any question? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 I think we have an unanimous vote there. And again, thank, we'd like to thank everybody for submitting your names and and your comments tonight. Were well received too. Thank you very much. And now that completes our appointments there. So Mr. Gooch, take us on to items with public hearings.
Yes, sir. The first public hearing is on ordinance to a municipality code to create a tourism advisory board to provide direction and advice to the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I think we have a presentation.
Yes, sir. Derek and Joel will be discussing this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. So I just have a short presentation here on our proposed Tourism Advisory Board. This would be an advisory body made up of individuals from industries within Victoria that are related to tourism or have some impact on tourism with their current or future efforts down the road. So just to break it down real briefly, the purpose of the board that we are proposing, the Tourism Advisory Board, and if you'd like, I could do a screen share. Okay, and James has, okay. Well, the purpose of the advisory body is to assist in promoting tourism and supporting the industries within the city that directly affect tourism. We are to advise a Convention Visitors Bureau on such matters as may be referred to it, including the administration of grant programs, advertising and other activities for the promotion of tourism. And also want to note that this will be an advisory body only. They'll have no power to contract on behalf of the city or to authorize the expenditure of hotel occupancy tax funds. So at the end of the day, you know, council and yourself and city managers also have have the discretion to spend funds. This will be purely an advisory body. The board makeup, we would have proposing thirteen voting members. In, in developing this, we looked at the advisory boards for a number of comparable communities throughout the state, just to name a few, including Conroe, Georgetown, San Angelo, just to name a few of the San Marcos, similarly sized communities that are similar to Victoria in some ways. So the thirteen voting members, three members would be to represent the lodging and accommodation industry within Victoria. Two members to represent the, or three members, excuse me, to represent the lodging accommodations industry. Members to represent the arts. One member to represent historic preservation and promotion. One member to represent the University of Houston, Victoria. One member to represent Victoria College. One member to represent downtown Victoria businesses. One member to represent the food and beverage establishment industry in Victoria. One member to represent the retail shopping industry. One member to represent the attractions industry. And then one member to represent the sports and outdoor tourism industry. It would also include five non-voting ex officio members, which would include the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the City Manager or his her designee, the Executive Director of the Victoria Main Street Program, the Public Library, Victoria Public Library Director, and the Victoria Director of Victoria Parks and Recreation. So next, next.
How do you define the attractions industry?
That is a general term for, and speaking loosely here, you know, we don't know if these individuals would would apply or be interested in applying. But family attractions, you think of things like Outlaw Pass or the Texas Zoo, things that don't necessarily maybe fall into arts or retail or sports, but things that do have a draw for travelers and residents here in Victoria. So when we included that category, we were thinking of those things that are a little more broad, that maybe don't necessarily fall into a specific category, but do have a stake in our and have an impact in our tourism industry. So next steps would be to approval of tourism, the Tourism Advisory Board bylaws. Applications, make the applications for positions available to the public, but we'd also make those well-known among our contacts within the tourism industry in Victoria, our travel partners, our tourism partners. And then the next step would be the board appointments.
I have questions. If we set up that board initial, would they happen to be appointed for just one year's time? Want to replace the entire board every two years?
Yes, yes, Councilwoman Scott. Yes, thank you for that. Our, our vision on that is to set up that board and working with those members of the board who we bring on to work with them to see what their preferred method would be, if, how we could possibly work in staggered terms in the future, staggered positions on there and and how we could work those in there. So we would work with the the board members that would be present once we first set up the board.
Thank you.
I've got some real concerns. I don't know if I'll wait until after this is over about the makeup, how large it is. Wait for the discussion.
You want to wait? The King and.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead, Joel.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Councilman Bocknight, you're talking about in terms of the number of positions that were on there?
Yeah, I don't, we'll discuss it when we council discussion on it.
Mayor, this item is a public hearing and if we, if there are no other questions from council members at the moment, we'd be ready to entertain any comments from the public if they're available.
All right, well, I will now open the public hearing this matter. Anyone wanting to speak, please raise your hand on the.
Mayor, there are no hands raised at the moment.
Okay. Seeing none, nobody raising their hand to speak, then I close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion on the item.
So moved. I got it.
We have a motion and a second on item C1. Now we'll open up for discussion. Mr. Bocknight?
Yes, I have a concern. It's a awful large board. I think it would be our largest one. I can't remember what the library, but I'm wondering if some of those can't be combined. They can rotate between a U H V and a Victoria College rep or you got downtown Victoria businesses, but you also have the Director of the Texas Main Street Program. I know that's an ex officio, but sometimes in, you know, in the past, we have struggled to fill positions on some of these advisory boards.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how you get a core.
Right, yes, sir. Thank you for that. And that's something we could definitely take a look at. We do in creating that board wanted to include all possible industries on there. So as I mentioned, we looked at a number of what other cities were doing. You know, we kind of also considered how our current hot funds committee is is set up, which will soon be helping to determine the the awarding amounts for the applicants. There is, you know, two representatives from the hoteliers on there as well. So we, we definitely wanted strong representation from the hoteliers. So in creating those, the industry segments, did want to make sure that everybody was included on there. We weren't leaving any industry sector out, industry sectors out. So that did account for those those higher numbers there.
Yeah, and and I can, I can speak just really briefly to what might help is just getting a sense of some of the things that this type of group would dive into. These types of groups in other communities typically are large like this. Because as Joe mentions, there are so many facets and so many different sectors that fall under tourism. I mean, if we think even just from a legal standpoint, on what those monies can be used for, from marketing to historic preservation to the arts, you know, there's so many different elements that that come into play with that. And so ultimately, we envision this group being one that is talking about how we utilize some of these funds. You know, we kind of ad hoc have almost had a committee like this. It just gets appointed every year. And so long term, we'd like this formal committee to eventually take over that process so that you don't have to appoint a new review for the applications every single year. We envision the group talking more about some transformational efforts in terms of how we can enhance tourism in our community. One of the big things that we hear from folks is that we don't do as good of a job as we can on tying in historic, our historical past with our tourism efforts. And so this group can kind of help with the, to that end. It's not uncommon for communities sometimes to enter into strategic planning efforts, even if they're handled in-house. Strategic planning effort on how to go about improving our tourism and our marketing. And so this group will kind of help drive some of that conversation. And so that's why we were wanting to kind of incorporate folks from as many different entities as we can. Soon you'll hear about the Parks Commission. And we are embarking on a similar path with Parks Commission where we want to empower that group a little more to be involved with the Parks Master Planning Process. And so we just feel that there's benefit in having more, I guess, stakeholders involved. We can give it a go. And if we run into issues of not being able to appoint people, I mean, we can always change it. We can always narrow it down. But the, we think it's important to incorporate different folks from different sectors as part of that conversation.
I think that maybe we could use the funds members. You already have five people there that are doing this type of work. Why couldn't we start with them and then incorporate the rest of people in that we, you're looking for? Because I thought that you were going to replace the hot funds committee with this committee that's when I first did and everything.
Right.
So it probably going, you think in long term, they're going to use the same committee to do the reviewing of the applications for hot funds. It'd be a good idea to start with them.
On your first point, you're correct that this board will eventually take over that responsibility, but for this specific cycle, we, there's just not enough time. There's not enough time for us to establish the board, solicit formal applications, and then have the formal appointments to the board. And so th- this year it will be a little weird because we're in essence asking to create this board and then literally in a few council items, we're going to talk about appointing the group of people that help review the applications for this next fiscal year. But in the future, you're right in that the board will kind of partake in that. Now, I wouldn't put it past the five individuals that get involved with the review of the applications in terms of they're, they're probably going to want to be part of the larger board. There are other people that Joel meets with on a regular basis through a partnership meeting that that they have. And so some of those players will probably submit to be part of the board. We just want folks in our tourism industry to feel like they're, they're part of our overall effort. And so being part of the board can help towards that end.
I think y'all can manage it. Okay.
Is it? Yeah.
I've got the same concerns.
I'm getting some feedback. Does it make any sense since it's an advisory board? Create a board that's a, that is a range of members anywhere from like twelve to eighteen from these groups so that it kind of becomes organic in the way, if you get a lot of interest at a certain time, you've, you try to get members from each one of these sectors, but it's more. but it's more flexible in how you fill it. And then all the applications would come to council. And that way, we're not struggling to try to find however many people it is, you know, all these people. The ex officio members are kind of defined, but, but, and we just fill them from a minimum of this number to a maximum of that number. Does that make sense?
Kind of looking at something like that and, and thinking, instead of it being three members here and one member here, because so many of us in Victoria go with more than one hat, and you could serve on this board and really represent more than one industry, that perhaps it would be something like no more for them. And I guess it's just for those, for the lodging industry and the arts, because if we kind of leave the number a little bit loose, I don't want to get it lost. But that gets into the, you know, so I can't quite get that whole, whole figured out in my head. I thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, no, that's a good thought. You know, if, if, if council feels that that might be a concern in terms of the size of the group, I mean, we can certainly reevaluate the makeup of that. And so that's not a problem. I mean, technically, this has to come back anyway. And so there's always an opportunity for us to come up with options.
Doesn't that Funds Committee, they spend a lot of time, and Thomas can tell for sure, but I remember spending a lot of time when they go through this to thinking, trying to get all those people to, together. I think it's tough enough for the funds to get together enough.
Perhaps, and, and I recognize that other boards have been a challenge, but I would also suggest that, you know, that we kind of just look at it from a, from a different lens, because there are a large amount of people that are very involved with the tourism industry. We, like I mentioned earlier, you may or may not be familiar that Joel hosts quarterly partnership meetings that literally have dozens of people from our different tourism sectors. We also obviously have the annual, it's a smaller group, but we've got the annual group of folks that review the applications. We don't personally foresee an issue in terms of not being able to fill the board. And so we can always try it, and if it doesn't work, we can adjust it. Or we can look at options now and, and, and just bring it back to council when it comes up and just present those options next time.
Other cities have similar boards with a lot of members. I think we should go forward with proposal and see how it works out. We can always adjust it down the road. We're trying to get to the minutia here. And I think they presented a good plan. Let's forward and see how it goes.
And as a point of reference, I was just going to add that as a point of reference, even though this isn't a board that's appointed by council, the Main Street Board is made up of about 13 individuals. And so that board itself is, is, is pretty large compared to some of our others. I think, big picture, part of the reason why sometimes we probably struggle to, to gain interest is that sometimes we, we don't do a great job in really identifying what the mission and the objectives are of the board and could be better at engaging the public. And I think if we're more clear with the purpose and we're more clear with the objectives and are actively, proactively engaging with the community, I don't foresee there being an issue. And we can talk more about that when we talk about the Parks Commission, because I think that's an example of, of a board that can be difficult to fill because there's just a lot of questions about what does that board even do and what are they responsible for? And so I think if we're just clear with the objectives and have somebody actively working with these folks, I don't think it'll be a problem.
Well, I guess in reality, if, if you, if you put out the applications, you don't get any from those individuals. You just simply don't fill those positions.
Right.
I mean, does that work? And that's why I'm trying to put a minute in. And we have a deal where you're trying to get advocacy, which a lot of this is, in motion of the city. I think we have to separate that duty from actual divvying out of the hot funds. Because when you talk about advocacy and promotion of the city, sometimes the large numbers are to your advantage.
Right. And so to give, to give you an example, so oftentimes, communities have conversations about the, the hotel tax rate. And oftentimes, you know, when people are having conversations about transformational initiatives in the tourism world, the people that would more than likely have issues with, A, how those funds are collected, B, how those funds are spent, are obviously the people in the tourism industry. And so this will provide us an official sounding board to run through different ideas and get these people engaged early in a process so that if at some point, there is some transformational initiative or idea that comes out, it's vetted through the stakeholders ahead of time and we have their support. Because I've seen it happen in other communities where sometimes cities embark on a significant effort that utilizes motel tax dollars and doesn't really include the stakeholders, and, and then it backfires because oftentimes, these stakeholders have good relationships with elected officials. They have good relationship with, with, with other community leaders. And so having them on board with whatever we decide to do and whatever vision we establish for how to use those dollars is going to be critical to its success and its implement, and its, in, its implementation, in my mind. You know, even something as simple as talking about a visitor center, right? We want to make sure that, you know, if we are going to have a conversation about adequate location for visitor center, that we actually include those stakeholders that actually see these visitors and we get some input on, on that experience.
Well, I don't have a problem trying it, you know. It shouldn't impede us. We ought to shoot for the best we can do. And, you know, if it does work, stop doing it and revisit it. So that's, that's kind of where I'm leaning right now.
Agreed.
So, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, item C1, say so, saying aye.
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 O's, same sign.
Thank you. Mayor, before we move on to item C2, just as a point of order, I don't believe we had a final vote on the last item we did, the Planning Commission. I believe what we did was to nominate people to fill in the blanks on the resolution, but then never actually voted on the resolution as a whole. And so if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to go back to that item, which was E1 to appoint or reappoint members to the Planning Commission. And it might make sense for the public to follow along easier if April were to reread the list of nominees that are actually on the resolution now that we completed the nomination of, and then you could entertain a vote to approve that resolution with those names filled in.
I think we did. Oh, the, the whole deal. We voted individually.
Correct. We voted individually on each member whose name gets put into the resolution, but then we didn't vote on the resolution as a whole.
Got you. Okay.
Okay, so in the blanks that are on the resolution, and he would fill in to reappoint Brian Rokita, the unexpired terms would be filled in by Cynthia Staley and Dr. Derek Hunt, and the two full terms would be filled by Vic Caldwell and Brian Oldgeen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to firm our earlier independent vote. So any discussion? Hearing none, all those who say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That takes us to item C2, which is an ordinance to amend section 2-97 related to the Parks Commission's purpose and approved bylaws. I'm sorry, not and approve the bylaws, related to the Parks Commission's purpose and bylaws. Jason's going to keep me straight here.
Thank you, Thomas. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I, I have a, a little bit of a summary that I'd like to basically just, just present to you on the background information as well as a quick PowerPoint to help clarify the, the item that's proposed. So the Parks and Recreation Commission was established by a city council in November 19th of 1962. The purpose of the committee was to basically advise council on all matters pertaining to the parks and recreation facilities and areas. During the first commission meeting that we had here in 2020, which was in June, one of the commission items that we had to discuss was the reviewing of their bylaws. And when we were reviewing the bylaws, we found that the commission role didn't necessarily align with an advisory committee description. So we started revising the bylaws and looking at them, and we also noticed that the code needed to be changed as well so that it reflected what, you know, what we needed it to. So what we have in front of you is a proposed code that basically removes all the verbiage of the commission bylaws and simply states the updated purpose of the commission. That's what we have in front of you tonight. This has been discussed with the commission in a joint meeting that we had, and they do support this. And so with that, I'd like to, to roll into the PowerPoint presentation. This is a, a basically two-part. And so again, to reiterate, the, the council established the Parks and Recreation Commission back in 1962, prior to the department being established. So the, the original purpose was to advise council on matters pertaining to acquisition, development, and I want to emphasize these two, the management and maintenance of the use of parks and recreation areas and facilities. And so our proposed purpose, you know, as Mr. Garza had mentioned earlier, the Parks and Recreation Commission, we definitely want them to be heavily involved with the Parks Master Plan. They are, they are going to be, you know, the proponents of, of the plan, proponents of the Parks and Recreation System. And so we, we definitely want to, to look at their purpose and change it to, to match that, that accordingly. And so what we're proposing is, is this purpose, basically to advise the Parks and Recreation Department on matters pertaining to planning the acquisition of park and recreation area and facilities, the development of parks and recreation areas and facilities, and other items determined by the director. Now, we are talking about the purpose in the code. And so when we present this code to you tonight, the city council still approves the bylaws for the commission, which governs the commission. And so our code is, our bylaws are interweaved with our current code. And so we're, again, we're looking at establishing a new code that removes all of that bylaw language and basically simplifies the code. The bylaw part of it is, we're, we're proposing a more advisory role for the bylaw and the purpose of the commission. We're also included updated language for electronic meetings and voting in the bylaws. So again, two separate things, the code and the bylaws, and, and we're, we're presenting the code to you tonight. The timeline on what we would typically look at for this is tonight, obviously, the first reading of the proposed code, which again, during our, two weeks ago when we had our Parks Commission meeting, was basically accepted by the, by the commission. They, they supported this change. So if all goes well tonight, we'll be looking at presenting the bylaws to the Parks and Recreation Commission during our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be August the 10th, so the commission could then vote on those bylaw amendments. Again, if it all works out, August 18th, we would be coming back to city council for a second and third reading of the code and then present those bylaw amendments that the commission had, had approved or, or accepted during that previous meeting. In September, we would look at having city council appoint the entire Parks and Recreation Commission. Now, we have, we have had a little difficulty with this. The commission hasn't met, in essence, for a year. Basically, in 2019, they only met one time in April. And so with us moving forward with the Parks Master Plan, we want to have continuity on the board. We want to make sure that we have the historical knowledge as well. And so in September the 15th, we would also propose or, or ask council to discuss an extension for some of our current commissioners. Again, one of the reasons, or a few of the reasons behind that are laid out right here in this PowerPoint. But no Parks and Recreation Commission's meetings were really held in the past year. Those who were appointed back in 18 were, really only saw two meetings, one in December of 2018, another one in April of 2019. And then our first meeting that we had of 2020 wasn't until June. Since that time, we've established a, a more regular meeting, and so we'll be having those, you know, once per month unless, unless not needed. But again, the continuity of the commission due to the undertaking of our current master plan is one of the biggest reasons why we're looking at changing the bylaws and the code. We do have three commissioners that we would request to extend for one additional term, again, to keep that historical knowledge and continuity within the board. If we did go this route, this would still allow us to keep the current appointment schedule in place. So nothing would be off, if you will, when it comes to their term limits. Could you go to the next slide, please, James? These are the individuals that we have on the board currently, or on the commission currently. And they're broken out into, into threes. The top three aren't, I mean, we, we don't really necessarily have to, to, to worry about those individuals. Those individuals, you know, they're basically on the board until next year. The three that we would be looking at, you know, a possibility of an extension would be Chairperson Lee Keling, Ms. Repka, and then Vice Chair Mike Ribetta. Those three terms expire at the end of September of this year. And again, just with being with the Parks Master Plan and, and having, you know, that historical knowledge, we thought that it would be beneficial to at least have the discussion with council for a possible extension for those three individuals. And then the, the following three, one, that's a vacancy, but the other two were, were basically off of the board as of last year. So we would be looking to, to fill those as well. That, that concludes the, the PowerPoint. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to, feel free to ask.
Jason, I just want to add, just to be clear, that the reason why eventually we want to have a conversation about the extension is that those folks are termed out. And so in essence, we would be seeking potential special exception to allow some of these folks to continue even after being quote-unquote termed out. But we'll get to that when that day comes. And again, just to be clear, today's item is strictly for the code part of it. At the later, next meeting or next regular meeting will be the discussion on the bylaws. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. If nobody has any questions, I know there's a public hearing component attached to this as well.
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Gush one thing. This is one of the, the entities of the city that falls under the open meetings, open records requirements and train for their members. Is that correct?
The training requirement, yes. I'm glad you asked about the open meetings requirement. This is an advisory board. We have some of our boards and commissions that don't serve a true governmental function, and this is one of them. And so even though that means that the Open Meetings Act itself does not apply, we do have a section in our city code that says that they shall follow the Open Meetings Act. And so I would say that means they need to complete the open meetings training, and we would prefer for them to complete the open records training as well.
Well, I'm just curious about the electronic coding portion. Wasn't that mentioned? And once this code is over, because we're, some of that may not be allowable. So it's nothing.
Yes, sir. I, I'm glad that you brought that up. You'll see that in many of the bylaws that we're currently bringing to you. It was included in the Tourism Advisory Board bylaws that you just approved. It's also approved, included here in the Parks Commission bylaws. I'm including that in most of the boards and commissions that are advisory in nature and are not strictly following the Open Meetings Act. In fact, that presents me an opportunity to make a recommendation to the council. You remember before that council, I asked that you tweak the code with regard to Robert's Rules of Order? Because Robert's Rules was not truly binding. It was merely advisory. And someone could misread our code as interpreting it to be binding. And so we clarified it to say that it was merely advisory. There's a similar situation about that provision in our city code that says that local boards and commissions that are appointed by city council have to follow the Open Meetings Act. You can't actually make. You can't actually make them subject to the Open Meetings Act because the Open Meetings Act contains criminal provisions that are beyond the scope of what a city can create. And so I don't believe that that section is actually operative. I don't believe that it is binding in any way. And so I would recommend that we bring back to council a code amendment in the future that clarifies that we expect them to follow the notice requirements of the Open Meetings Act for posted meetings. We want those meetings to be open to the public, but they are not subject to the act as a whole. Because I think that probably opens the door for it being invalid.
I did bring that up to kind of clarify. That we're okay moving forward with this. And it's really the advisory board.
Right.
So is there any other discussion before I open the public hearing? From the presentation? If not, I will now open a public on this matter, item C2. Is there any that has raised their hand to respond?
No, sir, there are no, no people raising their hands.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item C2.
I move to approve, um, C2.
The motion and a second, item C2, any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. I believe that takes care of all of the items for public hearing. Let's move on to the consent agenda, please, Mr. Guo.
Yes, sir, there are four items on, on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved with a single vote. They are first, adoption of the minutes of the council meeting on July 21st, 2020. Second, reappointing members to the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. Third, approving a programmatic agreement with Midcoast Family Services for a community development block grant, public facilities expansion project in the amount of $270,000. And fourth is amending the resolution approving the motor vehicle crime prevention authority grant to change the identified state statute.
Second, a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor, aye? Can we move on into action items, please?
Sure, we've already completed item E1, so now we'll take up E2, which is approval of a performance agreement for sanitary sewer installation related to the development of a medical park.
They have a presentation?
Yes. Can you see it, council members?
Yes.
Okay, great. Mayor and council, I'm just delighted to bring this item forward for your approval today. This has been a long time coming, and we are excited to bring this forward. Believe he is muted.
Hey, Mike, you're on mute, Mike.
Sir, all right. So, Mayor and Council, as you know, the 2035 comprehensive plan calls for the city to be the medical hub for the region. As such, we are always looking for ways to develop public-private partnerships with medical providers to achieve that goal. In late 2019, Dr. Verma with Diversified Wellness Associates approached the city to express his desire to construct a new medical park called Springwood Medical Park Plaza. So the medical plaza is located on 12 acres south of the Ditar North Hospital campus. It's near the intersection of US Highway 87 and Nursery Drive. But this map shows you exactly where the medical park will be located, where my cursor is. The medical plaza consists of four standalone buildings totaling 90 to 120,000 square feet. And it has over 300 parking spaces. The total investment that the developer will have is about $50 to $60 million. The developer is constructing four Class A medical facilities and has requested $380,000 in type B sales tax funds to install the sanitary sewer to the medical plaza. Now, building one is already under construction. It has 45,000 square feet, and it already has access to sanitary sewer. The developer at this time would like to build three additional medical buildings totaling 55,000 square feet, but the facilities need a higher capacity sanitary sewer line. So in summary, the sanitary sewer line, Mayor and Council, is necessary for completion of this project. The sanitary sewer line will run from the city of Victoria's Lift Station, which is right off the Zach Lenz Access Road to the site. The sewer line, we think, will be a catalyst because it will open up 140 acres for development. You have the Gary Albert Rosen Quest property, which has 98 acres. You have the Diversified Wellness Associate property with 41 acres. So again, this sewer line will be a catalyst for this area. Now, I also want to point out, council, that the proposed medical drive is already in the city's thoroughfare master plan in that the medical plaza will generate about $57,000 per year in property tax to the city. So this slide shows the building elevations. In other words, this is what the buildings will look like. The top left building, this building here, is under construction, and it's a beautiful building. It has three stories, 45,000 square feet. The total construction cost for this building is about 20 million. The developer already has the property leased up. The remaining three buildings will look like the rendering that you see below on the far left.
Mike, you're on mute again.
So the performance agreement essentially states that the VSTDC shall reimburse or will reimburse the developer $380,000 to install the sanitary sewer line in accordance with these terms. First, the con, the developer will construct three Class A buildings comprising of 55,000 square feet by December 31st, 2025. At least 50% of the space, or leasable space, must be for health or medical health services. The agreement is enforceable, up in execution, and will terminate at the end of December 2025. The developer, in turn, is obligated to dedicate an easement to the city for the sewer line by the end of 2020, construct the sewer line by the end of December 2021, and complete construction of the medical facilities by 2025. In exchange, the developer has agreed to create 100 new jobs by the end of December 2025. So we are excited about this opportunity to bring new high-paying jobs to the community. And there will be new jobs. At least 50% of the new jobs must be medical service providers. In regards to the disbursement of funds, the VSTDC will reimburse the developer up to $380,000 after the sewer line has been installed. And in terms of failure to meet obligations, if the developer fails to meet the sanitary sewer line requirements or the deadline, he shall not be eligible for reimbursement from VSTDC. Also, if the developer fails to meet the above job requirements, he shall repay VSTDC a parata share of the $380,000 within 120 days' notice. The VSTDC board approved this project, council, at its last meeting on July 27, and staff is recommending approval of this project. Dr. Verma is on the Zoom, and we are both here to answer any questions that you might have.
I move that we accept item E2.
Motion and a second to approve I E2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you, Mayor. That takes us to item E3, which is authorizing the professional service provider selection for the community development block grant mitigation programs through the general, Texas General Land Office.
We have a presentation?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yeah. There's not a presentation, but I was just gonna, a little bit of a little mention about this, this.
Katie, if you don't mind, I just want to take a quick second just to verbalize what everybody already knows. Counsel, you may be familiar that we recently created a grants administrator position. We're funding this partially with some of the COVID-19 reimbursement funds and then splitting the rest of it with a variety of our funds. We identified a need for this position basically because we know that we can do better at centralizing this operation to maximize our opportunity for grants. And so Katie, who has been working with legal now, and you're very familiar with, obviously, because of her involvement with the agenda development process, was recently promoted to this position, and so we are excited to have her grow alongside with us in this new endeavor. And I hope she's excited as well. And so we figured we would throw her right into the deep end, and so she's, she's gonna ta, take it in stride and, and already present this item for you tonight. And, and again, congratulations, Katie.
Yeah, thank you so much. I am very excited.
And, and I think it goes without saying, we wish well in your endeavor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that. Well, this item, just really quickly, is approving the procurement of administration services for CDMIT program. This RSV, RFE was released June 20th, and staff selected using an objective score sheet among three applicants. And trailer and associates was selected according to that selection committee. Another important point about this is that this selection is merely confirming the, the selection of the administrator, but the contract will still be coming back to council for approval.
Any questions for Ms. Conley? Hearing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to item E3. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to ask, hey, this is not the same thing as the regular CDBG. This is part of the, the one we, the Texas General Land Grant.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the, for those in favor. Say aye. Same side.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we move on to the next item, I'd like to also add my congratulations to Katie, but also my appreciation for the work that she's done in the legal department over the last six-plus years. She has been the backbone of our office. You all know the good work that she did in implementing the iCompass software that we're now using, not only for council meetings but across the city. But she's also been instrumental in responding to Public Information Act requests since the time that she got here. She has always done an exceptional job. I'm super proud of her for the promotion she's taken on, and I can't wait to see what she accomplishes next. Mayor, the next item is item E4, to confirm the city's program for hot funds for outside agencies and appoint members to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds Committee.
Mr. Farrell, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we've discussed previously through part of the budget process, the Hotel Occupancy Fund Program will be moving out of the legal department and eventually into the Convention and Visitors Bureau, sort of by way of the city manager's office. We're trying to help facilitate that process to make sure that we can kind of maintain and preserve some of the good work that, that Thomas and his staff have done, particularly Katie too, that they have done in getting this to be such a, such a well-oiled machine. You all have been here for it and, and seen, I think, some of the improvements. So, James, if you'll go to the next slide, we'll look at what that process looks like. So in mid-July, we did advertise the program and we did solicit applications from those that are eligible. And you may recall that the eligibility process is sort of twofold. One is creating room nights or the, the heads and beds category. And then there are eight other categories that programs and projects could qualify for. On July 22nd and July 29th, we did do applicant workshops, and we closed the application period on July 31st. During that time, we received 16 total applications. The next step is for us to form the Hot Funds Committee that you'll appoint tonight and for us to, to bring back a recommendation from that committee to you on a funding piece. Also tonight, we'll ask you to go ahead and set an amount in the resolution. And so if we can go to the next slide, James, you'll see that we have our membership recommendations based on the areas in the tourism industry. And we do recommend $135,000, which is consistent with the previous years that, that we've done this, and it accommodates the available fund balance and, and the expected revenues in spite of COVID. So we're, we're actually doing fairly well relative to, to the situation that we find ourselves in. So those members that we recommend from the hotel and convention area is Laura Dickey and Brandy Bedford. Represent the arts, we recommend you reappoint George Matthews. Represent history, we recommend you reappoint James Weirden. And for sports, we recommend you reappoint Mike Rivera and Vic Caldwell. If you should reappoint these members, they will be, they've all indicated availability to meet between August 10th and August 14th. Review the applications that we'll bring back to you later this month. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I have a question. Would you just reconfirm? You said despite COVID that the, felt like the funds were going to be sufficient to support this same level. That, that kind of surprised me, so I just wanted to verify that that's not requiring cuts somewhere else that we aren't aware of yet, or how did we get so lucky?
That is correct. It does not require any cuts or anywhere else. It's, it's more a function of preparation than luck, I think. You all, as a council, have made a decision a while back to ask staff and direct staff to start sort of building up the fund balance that would be available in this fund. There's approximately $1.4 million in, in fund balance available for this fund, or we anticipate that there'll be about $1.4 million in fund balance. Sorry, 1.7 million with the expense of 1.4 million. So we've got about a year's worth of, of funds available as a cushion for this. So it will continue to fund CVB, it will continue to fund Main Street, and it will continue to fund this. and it will continue to fund this, this sort of delegate agency program that, that we have. Uh, so we are very comfortable with staff recommending $135,000. That does not mean that we won't expect a shortfall in revenues, uh, but it does mean that we're prepared to, to adjust for that if we need to.
Thank you.
Eric. That, that was also, um, mu- many of the hotel stays weren't tourist-related then, so we're heavily invested in business-related, uh, hotel stays or, uh, is what we talked about prior.
Yes, sir. Uh, one of the things I think we've learned from COVID is that while many of our tourist attractions are struggling and many of our, our tourist, um, attractions are, have been closed even, um, our hotel stays have sort of rebounded in a way that isn't consistent with tourist activity. So we assume that it's a lot of business activity.
Right. Thank you.
And so that, and so just really briefly to kind of sidetrack for a second, you know, that obviously then tells us that a lot of our local attractions and what we would consider tourism partners are actually predominantly supported by the local community, um, which is a good thing, um, but also creates an opportunity to improve upon our tourism. Um, that's actually one of the reasons why we wanted to establish the Tourism Advisory Board, because our tourism partners, like the Children's Museum as an example, and some of our other museums, you know, they recognize that we can do better in actually getting a, a traditional tourist to come to our community. And the COVID experience has taught us that, truthfully, we don't have a lot of true tourism, um, that comes to Victoria. And so we need to improve upon that, uh, not only for the benefit of our hotels, but obviously some of these businesses, um, that they're already suffering. And so we need to diversify that a little better.
Any more questions for Mr. Farrell? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
First.
Second.
A motion and a second on item E4, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
Item E5 is a, a resolution to appoint Gilbert P. Ray, Jr., CPA, as the representative to perform the no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate calculations.
I move to approve item E5.
A sec.
A motion and a second on E5, any discussion?
Mayor, we have a 10-minute presentation on this item that we wanna, I'm just kidding.
Well, I, I got good news.
I was gonna, I was gonna add people.
I was gonna ask if not him, who?
I give you 10 names.
So, eh, hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side.
Thank you.
I E6, Mayor, is a resolution to grant a variance to section 10-115 and 30-27, which prohibits septic system installations within one mile of the city limits for two and, for an address 280 County Road.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second on this item, any discussion?
I, I just want to confirm that the version that we're approving, uh, does have a condition that the property is severed divided, this variance will not continue.
Yes, it does. That, that was added. Thomas added that to the, uh, resolution.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It's consistent with the previous one we recently approved as well.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Think we did now move into the City Managers Report?
Yes, sir. This evening, we have an update from, um, our Director of Development Services, Julie Fulgham, and she will present an update on the CDBG, um, analysis and talk a little bit about, um, some of the, uh, COVID allocation, I believe. So Julie, can you take, take that away, please?
Yes. Good evening, Council. Um, as Jesus was saying, um, first I'd like to update everyone on our CDBGCV funds, which of course were allocated through the CARES Act. And then I'll get into, uh, tonight's presentation about the analysis of impediments. But, um, for our CDBGCV funds, as you know, we were originally allocated $355,567. We allocated 246,500 of that back in June and had 109,000 remaining. Yesterday, we, um, did a, a webinar and did an open call to all the nonprofit and eligible agencies, um, to open the application process and made the application available. Uh, and again, reminded everyone through the webinar what these funds are used, supposed to be used for, um, what are the limitations for them, and opened up that, uh, application process. So we are accepting applications now. Our deadline is Friday at 5:00 PM. Um, once we receive all the applications, we will, of course, review them and bring back funding recommendations to council, um, tentatively at the first meeting in September, September 1st. So hopefully, we will have enough applications to expend the rest of the, um, funds and continue to, um, help people that are dealing with COVID-19. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on our CDBGCV funds, if anybody has any. If not, I will move right into our, uh, 2020 draft analysis of, um, analysis of impediments to fair housing choices. Uh, this is part of our five-year consolidated plan, so we will be asking council to approve this AI, um, at the next council meeting as part of that consolidated plan. It will be, uh, presented as an appendix to that plan. Next slide, Jane. So the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, um, which we refer to as the AI, is a process that CDBG program recipients, which we are as an entitlement recipient, uh, must undertake to ensure that we are affirmatively furthering fair housing under the Fair Housing Act. The AI, um, assembles fair housing information, so this is unfortunately a very data-driven, um, presentation and not the most interesting information, but, um, of course, it is so very important to our community. Uh, but we takes the fair housing information and then we identify existing impediments in our community that limit housing choices, um, and then also proposes actions to mitigate those impediments. So the first section of the AI, uh, provides the in-depth look at Victoria's housing market using our best available data, which is primarily census data, but we do also use a variety of other state and local data sources that you'll see, uh, referenced throughout the, um, document. Victoria County is, um, expected to see a population increase of 11.2% between 2010 and 2020. Approximately 72% of the county's population resides within the city of Victoria. So we assume, uh, based off multiple population models, that we'll continue to see an increase over the next 10 years, and, um, that increase is expected to be about 10% between 2020 and 2030. Next slide. So the analysis of impediments looks at income and cost of living for Victoria residents. Uh, the chart shows that in 2018, the majority of full-time year-round workers in Victoria made between $25,000 and $49,999. To better understand the cost of living in Victoria, table displays, a table on the right displays the cost of living in Victoria compared to the US national average. Uh, the US national average equals 200 in each category. And as you can see, it costs significantly more to rent than to own in Victoria. If you look at the, um, chart, uh, about halfway down, you can see the difference between homeowner or rental, rental housing. Um, and so it's significantly more to rent than to own, um, in Victoria, and that healthcare costs are also, uh, more than the national average. So, but if you look overall collectively, the cost of living in Victoria is slightly less than the national cost of living. Um, next we look at housing stock. As the table and pie chart show, single-family housing comprised 70% of Victoria's housing stock. The pie chart also illustrates that single-family residential building slowed between 2016 and 2018. However, our permits, uh, in 2019 show an increase in building permits for single-family residential, although we know that a lot of those building permits that were issued, uh, over the last year or two are actually, um, mainly attributed to General Land Office grant-funded replacement homes and are not actually, um, contributing to an increase in single-family residential housing stock, um, in Victoria, since they are replacement homes that were damaged during Hurricane Harvey. Multifamily housing also increased by 10% between 2010 and 2018 and comprises, uh, just under 24% of Victoria's housing stock. So to, uh, better understand the cost of owning a home, we would use data from the Real Estate Center at Texas A&amp;M. Uh, the 2018 and 2019 median home price, um, for Victoria was pulled from the data, uh, the Real Estate Center. So in 2018, the median home price was 173 and then 29, 173,000. And in 2019, it was 189,885, which represents an 8.9% increase in cost. Um, however, US census data lists the 2018 median home price as 131,000. So we do have some discrepancies in the data, but we believe that the Texas A&amp;M Real Estate Center is a more, um, accurate reflection of what the true cost, uh, for a median home price in Victoria is. Data from March 2020 shows, um, similar median home prices to 2019 and, uh, 2018. So in order to demonstrate affordability, the table, um, on the right shows the required income and down payment for a potential homeowner in Victoria. Of course, there are, um, 0% down, uh, housing pro- mortgage products out there, uh, but of course, they usually associate, uh, are associated with much higher cost, overall cost. So next slide. The cost of, uh, renting a house, the housing in Victoria is also analyzed as part of our AI. The top table shows that the American Community Survey, also known as the ACS, um, five-year estimate data for the median cost to rent in Victoria from 2015, 2018. And as of 2018, data suggests that 55% of renters paid anywhere from $500 to $999 per month in rental, um, in rent. The table at the bottom shows the median rent for Victoria in 2019 and 2020, and the required gross monthly income for a family or household in order to qualify for a rental unit. Um, just for quick reference, uh, $2,586 monthly income, uh, roughly equates to, uh, $14.92 an hour. Next slide. HUD also provides on a yearly basis the CDBG income limits for the city to determine eligibility for assistance based on family size and income. So these income limits, um, also establish the median family income for Victoria. In 2020, the median family income, uh, is $68,800. And then additionally, HUD provides the city with fair market rent costs based on apartment size. And so you see those figures on that chart. When looking at housing affordability, it's also important to analyze the percent of gross monthly income being used to pay for the mortgage. Uh, looking specifically at homeowners only, between 2010 and 2018, the chart shows the percent of gross monthly income, um, for Victoria homeowners with a mortgage. And according to HUD, a house becomes cost burdened when a household, um, expends 30% or more of their gross monthly income and housing cost. So as of 2018, uh, 26% of homeowners in Victoria were considered cost burdened by their mortgage, meaning they're house poor. Next slide. Um, in comparison, the data shows that renters in Victoria are more likely to have a higher housing cost burden than, uh, homeowners with a mortgage. And as you remember back to the cost of living, um, index where it does show that it's much higher, uh, cost to rent than it is to own. Uh, a household is, uh, considered extremely cost burdened when housing costs equal or exceed 35% of their gross monthly income. And as of 2018, uh, 51% of all renters in Victoria were considered cost burdened. Next slide. So for the next part of the analysis, we looked at income data for, um, homeowners and renters to determine what is the greatest need for affordable housing, or which group, um, faces the largest barrier to safe affordable housing. The data shows that there is barrier to affordable housing amongst mainly renters in Victoria, with 49.6% of renters making less than $34,999 per year, compared to only 22.5% of homeowners making that same amount. 51% of homeowners in 2018 made between $50,000 and $149,999. So once we go through all of that very interesting data, um, we look at the AI then looks at, um, we identify the impediments to affordable housing. And so the, um, impediments that we've identified is a lack, there's a lack of, of affordable single-family housing stock and insufficient, um, income, which has an impact of, uh, there being a shortage of affordable homes, uh, or shortage of homes at affordable price points. Um, homeownership and income disparities for communities of color is seen, um, in the table below also, um, has an impact of loss of future wealth or net worth. And then the lack of affordable rental housing, uh, and income, uh, has an impact of, uh, rising rents being linked to a rise in homeless populations and healthcare problems. Um, another impediment that we discover is that Victoria has a higher rate of substandard housing structures than the national average. Uh, it's especially true for households that rent and whose incomes fall between the 30 to 50% AMI. And the definition of a substandard housing unit is a unit that, um, lacks, uh, complete plumbing, uh, complete kitchen facilities, or has an inadequate or safe so- source for heating, um, fuel. Victoria also has a higher rate of overcrowded housing units than the national average. Um, this is especially true of renters at all income levels and age groups. The definition of overcrowded housing per HUD is having more than one person per room and considers a household severely overcrowded if there are more than one and a half persons sharing a single room. So to wrap up, um, our identification of all of those, um, and impediments that we've identified off analyzing our, um, our data related to affordable housing, we then lastly address the goals in the AI. So our goals to address real estate impediments are to expand the stock of affordable housing, continue to expand homebuyer assistance programs, reduce living expenses to allow more funds to be available for rent or mortgage payments, um, assist low-income owners with rehabilitation expenses, provide homeowner and financial literacy education for low-income populations, support programs that help maintain neighborhood stability, continue to assist low-income home, home buyers through the demolition of unsafe or substandard housing structures, and then also continuing, um, to assist low-income neighborhood stabilization through infrastructure improvements. And so, as I mentioned at the beginning, this, um, entire analysis of impediments that is, uh, required by, uh, HUD through the CDBG program will be, um, attached to our consolidated plan as an appendix, uh, which we will be asking council to approve at the next council meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Please, Ms. Fulgham?
Julie, did you mention how much money it was gonna take or we were gonna give from this? Or how do you support the, all this work to be done?
So a lot of, some of, um, these goals will be addressed through our consolidated plan, which of course then ties into our annual action plan, which is that CDBG yearly funding process. So for our 2020 allocation, um, you know, if you remember back to the presentation in June where we recommended our 2020, um, funding recommendations, we're receiving $604,000. And so that will all be part of, um, what we're gonna be asking council to approve at the next meeting.
So it's part of?
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, I'll just briefly add too that, you know, some of these same elements were also identified in the 2035 comp plan. Um, and so, and, and, and part of what we're trying to do as well as, as the city is not 100% rely on the CDBG funding that we get to help tackle this issue, because clearly, uh, with some of these figures not trending in the direction that we would like, clearly that is not enough. And so we clearly need to do more about addressing some of these goals. Um, and so that's why you may recall, you know, And so that's why you may recall, you know, efforts to look at improving workforce housing. You know, you may recall, you know, trying to revive the Housing Finance Corporation, you know. And so there are other elements outside of the CDBG process that we're trying to push for to help achieve these goals. But obviously, for purposes of the CDBG process, we need to go through this step. But it's a much broader issue outside of the CDBG process that we need to try and do something about.
Well, I can tell you, one of the most telling things, I've been to several seminars and presentations on this problem. And one in particular in Victoria, and I think Ms. Fulgham, you were there as well, when they took some of the examples you gave about the amount of rent versus a person's income. I think you mentioned $15 an hour is minimum. But they gave some real-life examples of people who told their story and they identified them as person A, B, and C, and told real-life examples of what can happen to a person when so much of their income is spent on housing. And it's really a telling tale when you see it and what after you pay that, what you have left to live on and how you absolutely have no safety net whatsoever for the things, like a blown tire and things like that. So when you see it in terms like that, it really brings it home to me. And I hope that we can manage strides in improving these in the coming years.
And the analysis of impediments, as I just mentioned, it's an analysis. So when you look through our impediments, you will notice that there are impediments that traditionally a city government's going to have a hard time addressing. And so when we look at our, when we've analyzed the data and then established what those impediments are, the goals are really listed out as things that we have a better ability to control as far as what is, you know, the role of the city. And so the impediments, like I said, if you're looking at those, they're not necessarily easy fixes, like, you know, low wages.
I think, I think, what it does is an overall improvement of our economy in terms of job growth and high-paying jobs. That's what's going to help solve a lot of these things, which will also improve everybody's lot. But I think, I think, I understand you can't necessarily take care of the problem. It's if we can create a better atmosphere of solid economic growth and higher-paying jobs, that's going to go a long way to solving some of these problems. It's kind of like always. And in some of these. And housing that's affordable.
So the analysis, the impediments can be really used across the entire community for all sorts of different, you know, programs or policies or initiatives. And then the goals that you see on this slide are really more tied to the CDBG plan.
Right.
Right. Hey, thank you. Any further presentations, Mr. Garza?
No, sir. That wraps it up. We can, we can go and transition into executive session.
Okay. It's time we will conclude the regular portion of our agenda and move into executive session. Our meeting broadcast will end and we will take a short break to allow staff to adjust the virtual meeting as appropriate for the executive session. Members of City Council, please remain logged into the meeting and the adjustments will be made by staff to take us into the executive session. So with that, our open meeting business is concluded. Thank you.
Mayor, we're going to announce.